...special board of select committee together for the presentation of the Board of Education budget. So, all those that are, please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. As we said, this evening is the presentation of the public Eastline Board of Education adopted budget for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. So, we have our superintendent here to give the presentation. So, Ms. Newton.
I'm going to turn it over to.
Turn it over to Eric. Board Chair Eric as well, so, okay.
Hi, everyone. Thanks. I get to take over for Tim, who's been doing, did that for over a decade. So, I want to give just a brief overview of the budget, and then I'll turn it over to Jeff, and I'll go through all the slides. You know, first point, you know, that's important is, as you can imagine, that the COVID recovery, we're almost two years since, you know, COVID hit immediately, or really, we shut down. But it still continues to be at the forefront of our Board of Ed and education, and it's still having an impact. We're still in the recovery stages. So, as you look through our budget for next year, there is still some impact of COVID as in our recovery. While there, you know, for the most part, COVID was negative, there are some positives from COVID that has resulted. And we ended up with the one-to-one computing, which is, has been great and really been beneficial to our district. And the other is, we did learn how to teach in a virtual environment. So, I'm not sure where that will go in the future, but it is something that, you know, we can look at as, as the years go on, and how to teach virtually as well as in person. As you look at the budget, we did have to make a lot of tough decisions, and you can see that the administration, Jeff and his team and the Board of Ed really partnered together to cut, put together this budget, which I think is, is a, you know, well-thought-out and kind of optimized budget. And you'll see that we did have to make some tough decisions and trade-offs, and one of the biggest areas is you look at class sizes, and you, we had a lot of parents come in and talk about class sizes, and it's trying to get that right balance of not having class sizes too big, but also being fiscally responsible. So, that's, you'll see that, that's there where there was a fair amount of tension in our budget this year. Other challenges with our budget: high inflation, higher inflation, inflation we haven't had in decades. We have higher energy costs, and then also higher minimum wage. So, those are things that are pushing and challenges that we have in our budget, and you'll, you'll see as Jeff talks about it. Other points of note is that we did negotiate two different three-year agreements, one with the teachers and one with the pairs, and the average increases for that is about two and a half percent per year. So, that's another thing that will go into effect beginning for the next budget year. Finally, you know, I just say overall, this is, this, I think this ballot, budget is, strikes the right balance between progressing our district in the education and also being fiscally responsible. And, you know, turn it over to Jeff to walk through it more, but I, you know, hope he'll fully support this budget. Thanks.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Baumann. Appreciate it. Just log back in and bring this up. All right. Okay. Thank you again. Appreciate seeing you all and being back here at Town Hall. As I know, we've had our share of Zoom meetings and everything in between over the last two years. It was good to be back onsite and sharing information about the Board of Ed adopted budget as of this past Monday evening. I want to start just by prefacing our efforts and collaboration, the approach that we take with the Eastline School District's budget. We use two works, the workshop, workshop format with a budget workshop in November and a budget workshop that occurs in December. We invite the Board of Finance down, and we had members that joined us again this year, which was fantastic. So, we try and get out as much information. We hit upon the areas of need as well as the formulation and our thoughts as we're putting the budget, you know, together from the ground up. So, it's a great, a great collaborative approach. It's worked well for us over the years, and we will continue to, to utilize that format as we move into the future. The Board of Ed has established a number of goals. I just wanted to highlight two of them because they're very specific and two of our most important ones as it pertains to this year as well as rolling into next year. So, these are two of this year's goals. One was recovery. Out of the gate, when we put these goals together very earlier this year, we thought we would be really, you know, part of the year starting and talking about it, we thought we were going to be in a much more, of much more of a recovery mode. We found that this year has been more challenging than last year in many ways. So, that has hampered us some in our recovery efforts. The second goal is opportunities, which is really kind of leading us into the following year, next year, and there's where our budget development comes into play. So, there's four areas that we've focused on this year that, again, are going to carry over into next year. And blended learning is that tech integration and instruction combined together, our social and emotional learning, our diversity, equity work, communication and engagement, and some others we're going to talk about briefly tonight that have come to fruition as we've moved through this year. Need statement: I wanted to just share the needs of the district as it pertains to the 22-23 school year. As I just mentioned, you know, we are still in recovery mode. We have not surpassed that. Hoping now, as we've, you know, we're seeing cases decline and COVID moving out, it doesn't come back, but we'll see where, where that takes us. But what it has done for this year is, which is going to lead us again into next year, is it's driven a component of needing for us to require, to continue to focus on student behavioral and emotional concerns and issues, that SEL side, the social emotional learning, ongoing achievement gaps that we have found this year and that we've been addressing and working on are going to carry over into next year. Needed support services, student support services, that entails special education and our tiered intervention work. Mrs. Davis is going to talk a little bit about special education a little bit later. And then, Mr. Baumann mentioned class sizes. We really need to be ensuring that adult-to-student ratios remain appropriate across, across the board. And, you know, we've, we've heard loud and clear from many of our parents this year as it pertains to the adopted budget, again, which just happened this past Monday evening, that parents want those class sizes to be as most appropriate as possible. So, we've done a lot of work and had a lot of conversations about that, but we feel we've met the, the median between having the class sizes still within the guidelines and yet being fiscally responsible as well as it pertains to our taxpayers. Five core areas that have really come forth through this year that, again, are going to lead into, into next year. And we'll, we'll talk about a couple of these. Student coaching, student-centered coaching, we'll address that with some examples later on because we brought in some, some coaches through this current year's budget that we talked about last year quite a bit with the Board of Finance and the Board of Ed. So, we'll talk about that in just a minute and show some data on that. MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support, we have it across our district. We're going to talk about the high school, though, because there's some specific areas at the high school level that we've put in place that have been very important. Pathways and career exploration, another big one that we focused on this year. So many students decide not, I shouldn't say so many, but many students decide not to go off to college for whatever reason, or delay going to college. They might get into a career or a path, and we have to try, work to establish some of those opportunities for students. Connections with EB, connections with the workforce, the Governor's Workforce Council, where we're becoming heavily involved in, to look for grant funding to help support ongoing opportunities for students that, again, aren't going to go on to college. So, we've done a lot of work, great work this year in that, in that area, and we're going to carry that over into next year. Technology advancements, Mr. Baumann mentioned about having the devices in place. They have changed our world. It's, it's been wonderful to see. Walk into a classroom now and students, everybody's devices is out on the table, they're using them so much more frequently. It's really, and the use of software and software programs has exploded. It's really brought us to a whole nother level, which has been fantastic. And SEL supports, again, we'll talk about those in, in just a few minutes. So, we'll circle back on that. I'm sure you're all wondering or curious, you know, we received ARPNS refunding. You might have seen this already. Some of you probably have, but we just wanted to put it out there for our public in relation to what we did with some of our dollars. And some of that, though, many, much of that was pertaining to staff and support staff that were needed to support those areas I was just mentioning. Math coaches, teachers, elementary teachers specifically to keep those class sizes down, technology teachers, we had devices, we need to make sure that we're teaching children the appropriate ways to use them and engaging them in classrooms. The SEL supports, school psychologist, middle school social worker. And then the pathways, that's where that MTS intervention and secondary 504 MTS and pathways coordinator come into play. And then the coastal connections program administrator. Some of these we've now backed off of, too. We've, we've eliminated some, we've gotten some into the operating budget, and we're going to continue to fund some in the coming year with the remaining dollars. So, we previously, we used 1.359, 1,359,000 for this current year. We have 840,000 approximately left as we look at next year. We're planning to use those dollars for those areas. Continued support with elementary teachers, elementary technology teachers through those that are at each of the elementary schools, and some psychology support also at the elementary level. Again, some of those other positions that I previously showed have been moved into the operating budget, and some at the administrative level have been reduced as well. Not hampering programming efforts, you know, at the pathways level, but just keeping us going with the work that we've, we've currently engaged in, which is important. So, when we look at major budget drivers, this, this is really what compounds this increase. These drivers, these four areas, you know, they make up 90, almost 93% or $2.2 million of our overall budget increase, which reflects a 4.59. Salaries, obviously, is always the biggest one, as is benefits. Salaries are making up 48% or $1.1 million approximately in the budget increase. We have contractual obligations. Teachers just finished their contract, a new contract for three years, which will start next year. Paraprofessionals, we just finished that contract that will start next year. We're starting secretarial negotiations for their contracts. So, we have a number of contracts that are seeing wage increases, averaging 2.5% of an increase. And that's, that's an average. Minimum wage also is up. We are watching that closely, as I'm sure you all are, and I'll show you a slide in just a minute. Mariana Stevens, our Director of Finance, had put together some inflation and some minimum wage slides. We'll share that in just a minute. And again, I, I mentioned that last bullet under salaries question. We've put dollars that we previously were using ARP funds, we've been able to embed some of those positions into the operating budget successfully, and also eliminating some FTEs and some positions at the middle school and high school level that we feel, due to enrollment, you know, we don't necessarily need. So, I'll, we'll talk about that in just a minute as well. Quickly, benefits, 5% we put in for health insurance as we're looking for an increase for next year. We don't know where that's going to land. We're all collaboratively in the state partnership together. We'll see where, where that goes, but that represents a $419,000 increase for us, or 17.5% of our overall increase. Contracted services, that increase mainly due to the techno, let me explain the technology contract. Some of you might be aware of this, but we used ARP, SIR dollars to cover some of our technology contract cost, hence freeing up dollars in the operating budget to fix our baseball field. We, that was an immediate need. We needed to do that. So, hence, you know, we have to reinstate that and put that back in. So, there's part of that increase, and that's that second bullet you'll see right there. And then nursing, the nursing contract. Nursing costs are up and the need for additional nursing support and a health aid at both our middle school and at Lilly B. Haynes. Utilities is a big one. Mr. Baumann just mentioned inflation as well and energy costs. They're all up. Gas, everything's up. That's representing almost a $300,000 increase in our overall budget for, for next year, and we don't see that coming down anytime soon, unfortunately, but, you know, we'll be hopeful. But, you know, the district electrics contract for supply ends in November, a 20% rate increase is, is estimated. So, inflation, we're looking at an annual inflationary increase, that bottom sentence there potentially 7.5%, which is painful on, on all of us. Minimum wage, just to give you a picture of what it's done since 2017, it's climbed. It's gone from $10.10 in 2017 upwards of, as of June 1st, 2023, it will be $15 an hour. So, we have had to be very cognizant of that. We have staff members that we've had to make sure in our agreements, our labor agreements, that, you know, we're, we're above those, those rates, obviously. If you look at some additional inflation statistics, Mariana just pulled some information from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. Look at all items that, you know, may have an impact from inflation. You can see that blue line, how it's just continued to climb since January 2021. And the red line is, you know, all items that are less, you know, food and energy. So, food and energy has really been a big, a big driver. And on this next slide, you can see energy in particularly is, is up significantly, and again, from the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics. Or, anything to add, you know, to these?
Those are just as of January. It's from January 2021 to January of 2022. When I pulled it last time, it was November, and it was four and a half, or six twenty percent, I think, and in January it was seven and a half percent. So, things like this just harmonize.
Yeah, not, not slowing down, but we're hopeful. We'll see what, where that goes. And a 20-year inflation projection, just so you can see, since January 2002, you notice 2008, slide 12, 2008, the recession hit. If you look at out to the right, the far right, we are climbing clearly, and that is impactful on, on all of us and something, you know, we, we need to continue to, to be aware of. Fixed expenses. Many of you have seen a slide of this nature in the past. It's important that we share this and show this to our community here in Eastline and all of you that, you know, a school district operating budget is really built upon fixed expenses. 97% of our $54 million is fixed. The bulk of that, again, being salaries and benefits, you know, that's making up almost close to 80% of our, of our costs, rounding it out with tuition, transportation, you know, and those operating expenses as well. So, you can see where, you know, we, we have, again, contracts, obligations, and are mandated to, to make sure we're meeting those needs and those, those expenses. So, just to give you a quick picture, this is, you know, where we started from the very beginning with our preliminary budget, just, you know, from the beginning, it started back really in September, October, the schools started putting their budgets together, zero-based budgeting, building from the ground up. We received the school-based budgets in November. All in, you know, or the preliminary budget out of the gate was 6.95%. Then we put in the positions that were being funded by ARPNS or funding, which jumped it up to almost 10%, 9.53 you can see there. Then we started working, you know, the number down, obviously, using remaining ARPS or dollars, making reductions, combing through every aspect, you know, of our operating budget to find where, you know, savings could be had, ultimately getting it down to the Board of Education adopted budget of 4.59%. Per pupil expenditures, this is always important to share also with our community because I think here, I know, here in Eastline, you know, we, we've done a real good job of, I think, keeping the, the cost per pupil at a fairly minimum rate and making sure that our students are doing exceptionally well as, when it comes to test scores and testing. So, you can see, you know, we're falling at a per pupil expenditure of $19,761, which ranks us, you know, 85th in the state, but we're, we're doing those, those towns above us. This is just the regional towns around us. The towns above us, who are paying more money for their, their students, we're doing much better academically than, than many or most of those towns. So, really feel we're continuing to get the, the best bang for our buck when it comes to our costs and educating our students here in Eastline. So, let's talk briefly about the, the impacts, outcomes, benefits of some of the components that we've put in place this year, which we are really working hard to, to continue into next year, both to support continued student need in the area of academic intervention and achievement gaps, as well as SEL supports, too. So, let's start with the coaching model. Many of you know, and we talked quite a bit last year about math coaches and bringing, you know, math coaches in, so we wanted to share a little bit of an update and a little bit of data as it pertains to the math coaching model. You know, we have coaches that, in the areas of math now at the elementary and one at the middle school level, and we also have reading coaches as well, and working in, also we have instructional technology coaches that are, again, helping to support the technology integration with the tech teachers. But just briefly, how a coaching model works, a coaching model is a six-week cycle. So, the teacher and the coach come together and focus on student data. So, they have to get some pre-assessment data. They use that to then do co-planning, co-teaching, and have a collegial collaborative approach to putting in place a six-week instructional cycle with, again, with that pre-assessment, heavy instruction, high-quality instruction, and then doing post-assessments to see where students landed. So, let me give you an example of that. Here's a grade three math coaching example. So, this is a subtraction learning piece that was, that was utilized, you know, this year back in the fall. So, students, grade three, use strategies to solve subtraction with and without regrouping within 1,000. So, pre-assessment, percentage of students that were proficient in subtraction facts and percentage of students proficient in subtraction facts with regrouping. So, at the start of the six-week cycle, pre-assessment's done, we had six students that were, and this is a third-grade class, six students that were proficient in subtraction facts and zero students in a third-grade class that were proficient with subtraction facts with regrouping. At the end of that six-week cycle, 65% on a post-assessment were proficient, and 75% with facts with regrouping were proficient. So, again, that heavy targeted instruction between the coaching, the coach and the teacher combined together is what's really giving us the bang for the buck. So, this is the data we're, you know, in the process now of really starting to collect and hone in on now that we're, you know, mid-year, midway through the year. So, that's a, a grade three elementary example. What teachers are saying, I won't read all of these, just in the essence of time, but just give you a snapshot of what some of our staff are saying about having coaches in place now. One in particular, I will mention, that gray one in the middle, you know, we, one teacher said, "We constantly thought about ways, you know, between the coach and the teacher to differentiate and accommodate the needs of kids." That's what it's all about, differentiating the work for every child that's in the classroom. It has to happen, you know. I think we all remember the days of everybody sitting in the class and we teach the lesson and the kids are expected to learn. It's not, it's nowhere like that anymore. Now, we're integrating technology and, and devices and have a, really, an individualized approach to learning for students. So, some good reflections there we wanted, that we wanted to share. So, at the middle school level, we have one math coach at, at the middle school that started this year, and she, she's a dynamo. She's done a great job. And wanted to give an example of what's called an iReady assessment. It's an online assessment tool that the middle school uses. And just walking across, just so you understand these, these bar graphs and what's underneath, you'll see all students, grade five through eight. So, all, all students are giving, are given this iReady assessment. And you'll see tier-two students, and then you'll see tier-three students. So, you might be wondering, okay, what's, I've heard that maybe, what's tier-two mean? What's tier-three mean? So, all students, obviously, is all students in the class, getting instruction, working with the teacher, working collaboratively, et cetera. Tier stu, tier-two students are students that are requiring some level of intervention, but that intervention is happening still in the classroom. Teacher might have a small group, or a pair might be in the room, provide some, some small intervention work. We call it tier-two. So, it's not a, a heavy intervention, but it's an intervention because we found that the students that are at that tier-two level, their growth is showing less than the students that are the general population of students in the regular class. And you move over to tier-three, and as you can imagine, tier-three is now is a more intensive intervention. It's not special education yet, but it's a more intensive intervention where it might be a small group that's pulled out of the class, might be happening twice a week. So, it varies. It's just a higher level of, of support for students who are showing a greater deficit in their learning. So, why you don't see a blue bar graph on the far right is because we didn't have a coach last year at the middle school. So, we didn't have the opportunity to provide some tier-level three intervention for students. Now, we do. And this coach, you can see, and this is a fall-to-winter snapshot using the iReady assessment, 100%, and this represents approximately 30 students that are, are now in tier-three and receiving tier-three interventions, 100% of them are demonstrating growth. And these, these students last year, they were in the, the tier-two category, again, because we didn't have tier-three. So, again, so if you look from left to right, just based on this math iReady assessment, last year, 55% of students were demonstrating growth at the winter benchmark. This year, 71% are showing growth. So, we're seeing an improvement there. The tier-two students, again, many of them, you know, or some of them have moved over in that tier-three world, but there's demonstrated growth, 65% versus 62% the previous year. And again, we had no data because there was no tier-three intervention support last year, but we have it now. And that's all because of, you know, the coach, and the coach is working in efforts with the classroom teachers and administration. Briefly, you know, the MTSS I mentioned earlier at the high school. The MTSS program, which is tied in with our Academic Resource Center at the high school, provides support to students who are struggling, maybe during a study hall, they can come to the, the ARC room and receive MTSS support services. Years past, we had a paraprofessional or two that were supporting students in that, that MTSS program. This year, we've been able to hire two certified teachers. So, we have a certified math teacher now and a certified language arts teacher, both providing instruction, instructional support to students who are struggling. We have over 80 students now that are part of the Academic Resource Center, and these two teachers are providing that support to those students. What's fabulous about this is in the years past, a paraprofessional, we would never expect a paraprofessional to be reaching out and talking with parents and collaborating on, on concerns that, that we're seeing and trying to assist. Now, we have that. We have certified teachers who are connecting with parents, helping to support students, and we're getting some real good feedback on, on this model and having some certified staff members part of this. Quick example of some growth, you know, that we're seeing at that level, this is some freshman data. This is a different assessment, it's called the STAR assessment. It's a math assess, they wanted reading as well, but a STAR math assessment was administered mid-year to, or at the beginning of the year, and then we had some mid-year data to, to all students. We found that 16 of those individuals were identified as needing urgent intervention, significant need there. All 16 of them, as we progressed through this year, have, have at least met their, you know, their growth targets that were identified, and more than half have exceeded those, those targets. So, that indicates, you know, that we're addressing math deficits at an accelerated rate, and what that's also doing is it's preventing, again, students at the high school level from potentially being referred, you know, to special education or needed, needed heavier level of support services. The, the graph just basically just represents, it's a norm-referenced assessment, national trends. They say in each of those, atypical growth, typical and below-typical growth, you should have a third of your students. We are exceeding that. We have none in the below-typical growth, 37.5 have made typical growth, and 62.5 have made above-typical growth, which is exceeding the national trend and the national average. So, we're happy about what we're seeing, and this, this is what we were looking for. So, we're really starting to pull this data together now and continue to, to work to share this out. Mrs. Davis, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk about student services and some of the priorities and needs, if you don't mind.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having us tonight. It's nice to see you all. So, in terms of the Office of Student Services, I started on the first part of this slide with just some data and information about things that we're seeing in the district this year. We've had, it's, so anecdotally, sometimes people come to you and they say that we're just getting new, more and new, more and more new students, and so you want to kind of dig into that and see, like, what is the actual data showing us? And so, we've had 23 new students, we've had 77 new students register since the beginning of the year, since August 30th, the first day of school. 23 of those have been students with disabilities. But we also have students exit, so 14 students with disabilities have also exited. What we've noticed, though, and it's a little harder to quantify, but is what I'm calling a level of need. And so, of those new students, six of them came to us with a one-to-one paraprofessional in their IEP, which speaks to the fact that they have a more intense level of service needs, whether it's behavioral, medical, or, you know, intellectual and academic support. So, that's different. We haven't had, you know, usually we get one or two new students who need a one-to-one paraprofessional, you know, that comes in the IEP from a different district or out of state, and that so far this year, we've had six. You know, so, we like to track our initial referrals to special education. Mr. Newton mentioned how the MTSS process is sort of that intervention process to hopefully support and remediate gaps that students have in their learning and keep them from needing to be referred to the special ed process. So far, we've have, have had 70 referrals for special education. To give you a reference- To give you a reference, last year, we had 90 for the whole school year. So we're already trending, you know, and we still have many more weeks of school left. And what we noticed, just in speaking to the principals, is that last year, with our hybrid model of instruction, and having been shut down for a period in the spring the year before that, teachers were less likely to refer their students because they felt like their school year had been interrupted and that was sort of unfair to assume that, you know, there was a potential disability when really they had had uneven instruction. So this could be part of a COVID bubble of having an increased level of referrals this year because we're sort of making up for kids we didn't possibly refer last year. Harder to pinpoint that with clear data, but anecdotally, that's been the experience as I talk to others in the district. We do currently, as a result of that, have high caseloads in our elementary specialty programs. So that word specialty program is a term that is local to us, but it's our programs that serve our more intense students. So kids who might have been sent to a LEARN placement out of district can stay in district because we have a program that has additional paraprofessional support, has a behavior analyst, has wraparound services with the speech and OT, and the students may spend more time in the special ed classroom than in the regular education setting. They're not self-contained, any of our classes, but they are more intense and provide a home base for students. So, for instance, at the elementary level, one class has 10 students, one class has nine, and another class currently has six. That's a lot when you're talking about students who have the most level of communication need. They might be using an iPad to communicate, their verbal skills could be impaired, they have intensive behavior programs to help shape and learn appropriate social skills as well as academic support needs. So those programs, more than ever before in my time here in East Lime, are at those upper levels of enrollment, if you will. And then additionally, just at the elementary level, we are seeing an increase in, you know, a steady increase in our numbers of students eligible for special education. So we're monitoring that. And so then, on the other side of this slide, are the proposed solutions to sort of support those trends. And so at the elementary level, in this budget, we're proposing an additional halftime special ed teacher at, I'm sorry, at Lily B. Haynes and at Niantic Center. So it'd be a 1.0 position that is split between the two buildings. Something else that is a new trend for the district is the number of multi-language learners who we have. In the school year 2021, we had a total of 56 kids that were identified in need of English language support. We are up to 82 as of yesterday when I checked this number. So, you know, we've basically almost doubled our population in the last couple of years. So we are proposing an additional teacher, certified teacher, to serve those students, and that's, you know, K through 12. We do have additional medical needs at the middle school, and so this year, we added an additional nurse for five hours of that school day, and we're proposing to continue that because the students with those needs continue to be students at East Line Middle School. And then at Lily B. Haynes, because we have creative play school, integrated preschool, the specialty programs at the elementary level as well as the general population of Lily B., there's just a lot more kids on that campus. And so in light of COVID and the health and safety precautions wrapped into that, as well as just having enough support on campus from the nursing office, we had added this year a health aide to support the health room there. And so we'd like to continue that for next year. You've heard Mr. Newton speak about social-emotional learning, which also is, we often combine with our conversations around mental health. So social and emotional learning, I like to think of as the building blocks to provide for positive mental health supports in the future. And so what we've done this year is really invested in professional learning for our teachers around understanding what social-emotional skills are and how to teach them in a really direct way. And so at each of our buildings, teachers are now working at the elementary through morning meeting, at the middle and high school through advisory, to have explicit lessons on skills related to pro-social behavior, for example, relationship-building skills. We focused a lot, and it dovetails with our DEI initiative, to have kids feel that their school, their class, is a place where they belong, and they have a trusted adult and know how to grow those relationships. Self-awareness, responsible decision-making, goal-oriented behavior, those are all what we call social and emotional learning skills. They can be taught directly and ultimately lead to a healthier, more well-rounded student, you know, in the long run, and there's a continuum, a scope and sequence, if you will, of teaching those skills from kindergarten through 12th grade. And so we're really putting time and energy to work with our staff to be knowledgeable and understanding how to teach those skills so that we can, you know, realize those for our students. So in order to support the student population, we do have one social worker that works across all three elementary schools, that's continuing. We had added an additional social worker at the middle and the high school last year. One middle school social worker was funded with our ARP dollars and has made a great impact at the middle school. And our second social worker at the high school was part of our operating budget proposal last year, and so we see enough support to maintain those positions. As Mr. Newton said, we had hoped to sort of be coming around the bend of COVID, and we really still feel like we're in sort of a response/recovery mode this year. We had kids coming back to us who really had spent so much time on their own and lacking social situations that, you know, they struggled when they were with their peers. You know, they went from a half-size class in hybrid, right, to full-size classes when we're back open and a lot less summer opportunities at camp, and so they're just not, haven't, they've sort of stunted their problem-solving skills, if you will, on the social level. So you can see on this slide that at the middle school, to date, we've had 85 incidents that we categorize as crisis incidents, and 76 at the high school. So that's almost one per day. We just passed at least one per day. We've just passed the 100th day of school, like, two weeks ago, so it gives you a little bit of frame of reference. And these can be anything from a need to call DCF, to a student expressing suicidal ideations, to really elevated behavior that takes a team response to help de-escalate the students. So there's a variety of different situations that we categorize as crisis, but this gives you a little bit of a summary. And our social workers, our school psychologists and our school counselors are the main providers for supporting students during the crisis and, of course, as follow-up with counseling and services afterwards. At the elementary level, we focus on school psychologists in this role. They do, they function as evaluators when students have a question around special education eligibility. They also serve in that counseling and problem-solving role to support students who need that service. And I already mentioned that, you know, we're really investing heavily in the social-emotional learning PD for all of our adults, as well as using a universal screening tool called the DESA to check in on the social and emotional skill development of our students three times a year, and which helps gives our teachers more information about what skills a student may be lacking or where they have a strength. So I think, unless you have any questions, I'll turn it back to Mr. Newton, and thank you.
Just a minute for questions. You know, this is a great opportunity just to put a plug into and thank the town for bringing on Sarah Furman, who's working-
Youth Services.
Yeah, the Youth Services Bureau and leading that charge. She's done a fabulous job, is a real go-getter, and has really been reaching out to collaborate with us. So we are connecting Youth Services and staff there with our counselors, you know, at the school level. That's going to be so important for, you know, the summer and, you know, when schools aren't open or in session and families still are in need. Mrs. Davis mentioned the special education, you know, the need, the increase in services in students that are being identified. I mentioned earlier that, you know, we're trying to back that number off. Our prevalence rate is raising. The state prevalence rate for the special education population is raising. We're trying to back that down, and by providing the more intensive tiered support services, that's what's going to help do that, and that's what we're really trying to focus on. I mentioned more at the beginning of the presentation about, we did have some reductions. You know, we have bubbles at the middle school and the high school level of some lower-class sizes. So at the middle school, we've been able to actually reduce a Kiva because of the fact that there's a bubble there, and class sizes, we found that we could make them very appropriate with lesser positions. So we reduced three middle school positions, and at the high school, we reduced 1.4 FTE reductions. So, you know, 4.4 reductions in staffing positions as we look at next year. And that's it. That's all we have, as it pertains to some slide information. We're here to openly talk. I know you received the budget book that Mrs. Stevens and Finance Office put together, so happy to answer any questions or talk openly.
I think to go through the finance book, most of us, you know-
Yeah, you probably haven't had the opportunity. Yeah, the board just adopted the budget, sorry for the delay.
But, you know, we can take some preliminaries, but could you possibly give us, I know over the next few days, there might be some questions. Is there a point of contact that board members should reach out to?
Absolutely, yeah. Email me, and I'll collect and put things together, and we'll gladly respond and share information. So please, we want to have an open process and make sure you're aware of all that's happening.
Any preliminary questions for the superintendent or any of the members of, that are here from Bill? And grab the mic, Bill.
Yeah.
Microphone?
I'm sorry.
And make sure it's on.
It might not be on.
Oh, no.
Sorry for being a little bit late. No problem.
I didn't see anywhere in this presentation for the total student population. Is that in here somewhere?
So sitting right at that 2,700 mark, 2,650 roughly as of right now. As we look out, projections are still slated out to around 2030 to maintain the same level, the same number of student population. So we have a lot of mixed feelings on that. Some are saying it's going to go up. We're seeing, you know, growth in town.
I've watched every year your projections go the opposite way than they actually. It seems like every year they, I understand it's-
They have flatlined.
It's not clear data.
Yeah, it's, but they, for right now, they seem to have flatlined.
Okay. So one of my questions was about Salem students. Do you find that when Salem students come to East Lime, they're as prepared as the East Lime students?
We do. I think Salem runs a very robust elementary/middle school program. A lot of connections we have with the Salem staff and our staff, and we're trying to do more of that to make sure that the experiences that they're having are aligned with what our elementary/middle school students are having. So when they come together, you see a fairly comparable previous schooling experience.
Okay, so you're working with them now.
We do.
I see that their cost per student is $1,000 less than ours, which isn't huge, but it seems like there's some opportunities there, maybe that we can look at. The STAR math, is that across all math levels? Is that both AP classes as well as basic, fundamental?
Yeah, all students use that. It's just one assessment that is utilized among others as well, but the main one that's used.
Okay. Again, I just took some notes as you were going through here. The increased number of students with disabilities that we have this year, is that consistent with the state average?
It is. The prevalence rate is, we were just talking about that the other day. Yeah, the state average is up. I mean, it's, it's up around 16% now. We're a little bit higher than that. So that, a couple of years back, when I started in East Lime, we were at 13, and the state was, I think, around- Yeah, exactly, yeah.
And is that because we're rating people slightly different? We're-
I wouldn't say it's rated, it's just there's more-
It's a great question, to be honest. I was thinking, you know, lately, as we prepare for these types of presentations, it would be great if the state could provide directors with some sort of, like, you know, what are we seeing, why are we seeing this? But it's pretty consistent across the state.
Because my question tends to be, has been historically, do we have really good programs which attracts people to come to the neighborhood to take advantage of our programs, in which case, we're now paying for students that otherwise Groton, Waterford, some other town would be paying for? So I always try to get my head on, are we statistically seeing more of a certain population because we're attracted to that population? Because I've always been concerned, two kids that have just gone through the school system, one graduated four years ago, one graduated 14 years ago, they're graduating class as soon as they graduate, the families disperse, right? Families come to East Lime because we have such a great school system, they go through the school system, and then the kids graduate and it's time for everybody to go to some other part of the country. Not all of them, but a high percentage seems like they're just kind of passing through East Lime, taking advantage of the school system and then moving on. So I've always kind of tried to get a feel for what that is. Are we attracting people? And at $20,000 a year, it's, you know, it's expensive. So that's kind of just, I don't think I can get an answer for that, but I think I need to kind of somewhere or another wrap my head around that because, again, as we all know, this increase is large.
Yeah, and, I mean, just quickly to speak, every town, I think, across Connecticut is seeing their prevalence rate go up, so it's not us. I mean, we provide some excellent programs, and I think you're right, but I think people do move east line, you know, for the school systems and for the services that we provide. And, you know, as Kim said, we have a lot of internal programs that support students here, so we don't have to send them to outplacements, which cost that much more money.
Right, right, right.
So that's a big piece.
No, I mean, I enjoy the school system, I'm glad we're doing the best for our students that we can, but when I do the math, it takes 78 years of taxes to pay for two students to go through the school system. So it's, those people that pass through town, somebody's got to pay for that, right? So when I watch the school budget as a percentage of the town budget increase every year, right, so this year, you're at 67% I think of the total town budget, it just gets, it's not sustainable. It's, at some point, right, you got to say, you know, there's just, we can't pay a higher and higher percentage every year and try to figure out how we're going to keep the town functioning, right? I look at the senior center, it's 42% of the population uses the senior center, and it's like 1%, 2% of the town budget. You know, it just seems like there's some disparity there that we have to kind of work through.
Can I add something, Bill? Because I just want to add something to help you a little bit, because there's a tremendous amount of rental properties here in town, right, that needs to be considered, and that is specifically targeted towards families, children, three bedrooms, high rental base. So that is something that should be considered and maybe looked at by the board, but that is something that we have here, and yes, people come here.
Yeah, I've got a, I downloaded some charts, and this is maybe digressing, maybe not. The Niantic end of town, there's like a pretty steady, if you plot it by age, it's fairly steady hump. If you look at the Flanders side of town, there's this really tall hump at the school age, and then another tall hump at the 45 to 55 age group. So clearly, you know, that's the area that has most of the students, and I think we know that because of the rental properties down by the beach and things like that. So I think that all kind of proves itself out.
And Rocky Knutti is right on that, yeah. So depending on what math-
Yeah, so this, the plot, you can do a social security report by zip code. So it's, you know, 333 and 657. Anyway, I need to digest all this, but that's just off the top of my head. That's the first couple of questions that you can remind.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Bill.
Okay.
Other questions for Jeff?
I have a couple. Hey, Jeff.
Sure.
I took a look online at the capital improvement plan, Chris Lund's-
Yes.
-program.
Sure, yeah.
And just trying to get a sense of what your capital request would be for this year. I mean, there's a lot of items and a large sum, but I don't know if it's all happening in 2022, 23, or will, you know, is there a focus or?
Yeah, what you have in the budget book is a request for 2223. Mrs. Stevens, myself, and Mr. Lund have talked about some of these, we've talked, you know, with the board. We're trying to get onto more of a schedule of fixes and replacements, so again, we're not kind of continuing to kick the can, you know, down the road. So what's outlined here is what we were proposing, and I think that's obviously going to have to be discussed, you know, by the boards, and, but if, Mr., if you want further information or Mr. Lund to come back to a Board of Selectmen meeting, you know, we can clearly outline each of these, we have more time, or if there's anything specific, I can bring that back to him, or you want to email me. Happy to do so.
Yeah, it just struck me a lot at once, you know, because you, you know, in terms-
Yeah, there's quite a few on there.
I mean, in terms of previous years, which I'm not sitting on Board of Finance, but, and I, and, you know, it seems like very needed projects, you know, but it's just a matter of pacing them out, you know, and it just seems like a very full year of projects. So with, between high school needing certain renovations with lockers and the auditorium and so forth and so on, but, okay.
Yeah, you see that switch now, moved away from the elementaries, it's kind of turning our attention more towards the high school.
Right.
The middle school building's over 20 years old now, and it's going to start to require some, you know, some attention, but the high school is really kind of the focus first.
Right, and there is a priority column-
Yes.
-in there, so that may, that may help-
Exactly.
If, you know, we need to stagger things at least over a two-year period or something like that. Okay. So another question I had is just about the idea of sunsetting, when, you know, we've had the pandemic and we've had extraordinary needs from the technology needs- But is there, has any discussion even begun about a plan of sunsetting some things as, you know, hopefully, the, you know, the tech innovations, and as Eric mentioned, continued learning in that way, and the counseling continue? Is there some point at which we feel like, oh, this is sort of a goal, you know, to reduce the dependency, if you will, or the use of, you know, between social workers, psychologists, et cetera? Is there a sense of that yet? And I know we're just, I'll call it, beginning of post-pandemic, and we don't even know, you know, but-
Yeah, that's a good question. I almost feel it might be a little bit too premature to say yes and what those things might be. We said at the beginning, we thought this year was going to be so much different than what it was, and we might have been able to sunset some things, but we're already looking at next year's budget to continue to try and support some of these ongoing issues. They, you know, the achievement gaps, the SEL components, the crisis data that we're continuing to see, which is on the rise, those things need to start to come back down before we can begin to sunset, I think, some of the-
Okay, so, yes, that's my question, and you need to see-
We need some more time.
Time and data to show that the counseling is working, you know, the interventions are working-
Agreed, yes, yes.
And all that, okay, because that'll be important, because, you know, your ARP money will be done-
Exactly.
With the $800,000 left, use, and so forth. So the question will become, how does that, I mean, it's always a possibility that the federal government continues some support, or uses, or disperses monies that have not yet been spent, which I understand is the case, but we don't know where it's all going to land. But just thinking ahead to that, in terms of, you know, efficiencies, you know, streamlining, if you set up anything, you know, for sunsetting at some point.
Yeah, it's a good, good question.
Okay.
Okay, we only have about two or three more minutes, because we have a town meeting scheduled in seven minutes.
I'm all set.
Dan, anything to add? Not at the moment. Roseanne?
Thanks for saving me to last. Because I planned for half an hour. So to follow up on the previous questions, how many positions have you funded with the rescue money?
Roseanne, well, you know, the slide is gone, but here, Roseanne, I can, I can, roughly around 14.
And have those people who fill those positions been told that when the money runs out, that they are out of a job, or is there a plan to keep those?
Many are, some are continuing. We have four, seven, eight that are continuing with ARPS for funding next year. Some have been worked into the operating budget, and in others, yes, they've been told.
And so you told me it's a total of 14 positions?
Roughly, yeah. I'll have to count up exact, it was roughly around 14, four, five, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, yes, almost 14 positions.
All right, I apologize if you-
Oh, that, no, no problem.
-left that out before I arrived.
It's Slide 6, Roseanne, in the packet that I provide, six and seven.
I wrote down the number. There's a, considering that we have several new developments coming online with multiple units, I'm beginning to hear concerns from the community, the elementary school community, that there might be redistricting. Is, if so, I assume that would not be happening in the next school year?
I'd love to say it won't happen the next 10 years, because then maybe I can retire and not have to deal with it, but, no, we started to look at some minor discrepancies. The villages Candace just brought up, we have to look at that pocket. That could be an area where might, a small pocket might need to be redistricted to Niantic Center. We haven't gotten there yet. We are in constant conversations with the manager there and tracking that, to see if there's some other developments that are coming up. We have a district, we have to monitor those closely, and we might need to head it off at the pass and make a switch and move those pockets into one of the other two elementary schools as necessary.
Well, just to let you know that there's already becoming quite a bit of concern-
Okay, that's good to know.
-in the elementary school community.
All right, thank you.
So we heard a lot this evening about special education, but we didn't hear a lot about the academic side, the overachievers, so to speak, or the high achievers. So I'm a bit concerned particularly to see staff reductions. A bit of a decline in enrollment doesn't tell the full story, as having taught in the classroom for a period of time yourself, they go to a specialist, and the specialist sees them in a small group. They go back to the classroom, and it's 23 or 24 students to deal with. And I believe that our projections still say an acceptable class size is in the neighborhood of 22 to 24 for the upper elementary. So I'm concerned about, well, first of all, we seem to, there doesn't seem to be much concern about redistribution within the KIVAs.
Well, we've, what we found was, looking at the numbers, that our seventh and eighth grade population, those class sizes would have been lower, in the teens, lower than the fifth and sixth grade. So that can't be. And we had an opportunity where we could make a reduction of a KIVA and some staffing positions, and allow the class size to still sit around 22 students. So we're not exceeding, we're in that bubble that's, you know, acceptable, I guess is the word I'll use.
And where would the high school reductions be? What courses?
We were looking in world language, and we are still working through the departments to see exactly where that other 1.0 reduction would land, so.
Well, it seems like a small amount of money in terms of the total budget, and I would, I hate to see established classes, particularly in the electives, be sacrificed for this. We have a number of teachers at the high school who for years have wanted to teach special classes, but there's never the time in the schedule. And it seems to me that this might be an opportune time, considering the interest in more technical training, job availability, and for students who perhaps are not, so to speak, the standard book learners, it seems to me that this would be an opportune time to introduce something that would be of high interest, and also meet a demand for the workforce area. And at one time, we had a very healthy program-
I remember those days.
-in the area of industrial arts, which attracted a lot of students-
Yeah.
-who went right from high school and got jobs. We know there's going to be a big demand for that. Of course, number of those teaching fields, the demand is high for those teachers. But I would like to ask that that perhaps be reconsidered. You know, it's harder for some students to pay attention to the standard curriculum, and yet they aren't necessarily special education students or special needs, they just would be interested in a different course.
I can't agree with you more, Roseanne. That's, we brought that pathways coordinator in this year to help build those other opportunities. Again, not the college track, but opportunities to connect with EB and through that general work, the Governor's Workforce Council. So we've done a real robust job this year of trying to build that. It's going to cut back a little bit next year, but we still, we're going to be keeping it going.
Well, I don't say to eliminate the upper, the more academically challenged, or the more academic students, shall we say, because they too are looking for something a little bit-
Agreed.
-different. You know, that we're going to be, there's going to be a continued need for a psychologist and that sort of thing. So I would like to ask that perhaps that be reconsidered, or at least have some idea of where the cuts would be, so that if people wanted to express support for that, they could at one of your meetings do so. So thank you for that.
Yeah, appreciate that.
I, of course, we just got all of this voluminous information. I'd like to know how our, how our so-called college prep students are doing. I haven't had time to look through here, are there SAT scores in here for any comparison?
No.
So that we know how those students are doing?
Yeah.
And I would, I would appreciate some information along those lines, if possible-
Yeah, we have that data. Can definitely pull that together, absolutely.
And my last thing is the school buses.
Yep.
Now I have a little bit of leisure time during the day, but time and time again, I see buses that have four students on them, five students. You park in the high school parking lot after, you know, after school or before school, and you see buses, standard, full-size buses, pulling in there with seven kids on them. So perhaps, is that some, I know we're under contract to the bus companies, but I think, is there some way that we can take a look at that?
We did, about two, three years ago, we looked at it, and we continue to look at it each year. I think coming off the pandemic, too, more students are starting to ride the bus more. We've seen an increase, but we definitely will keep looking at that, absolutely.
All right. And lastly, the number of students, do we have a chart in here that you could refer me to? The number of, the total student enrollment in the last five years?
No, we don't have a full enrollment chart. We didn't put one in for this year, but happy to, we have those from past, and can easily put it together.
So that we can see as people were talking about-
Yeah, where it's, what it's been, sure. Yep. Yeah, that's a good thought, too, for, you know, we think about the Board of Finance, and we can add that in as well and share that out.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
That was about a fourth of my questions.
Well, you know where to find me. You know where to find, okay, we're into the town meeting now, so we'll take a motion to, it says budget discussion deliberations, which we're not going to be able to do right now. Motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Some vote.
Second.
Second.
All seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, pose, we're adjourned.